Good evening. Our Colorado Township Council Agenda Meeting of November 1st to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 22nd, 2021, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record on December 28th, 2021, and the New York Style Ledger on December 27th, 2021. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision Public Access Channel 21 at 11:00 a.m. on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www.preciponey.net. Would you all join me in a flag salute?
[inaudible]
Roll call, please.
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Ms. Grignani.
Here.
Mr. Musella.
Here.
Mr. Neglia.
Here.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Also in attendance are Mayor James Barberio, Township Attorney Michael Leary, Township Clerk Collette Madden, Council President. We have a quorum. You may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, November 22nd, 2022 at 7:00 p.m., our regular meeting, and December 6th, 2022 at 7:00 p.m., Agenda Meeting. Presentations and reports. Mayor, you're up.
Thank you, Council President.
It's not working.
It's working. Sorry, again. Sorry.
Yes.
The Parker Mason is working or not? No, it's not. Well, I can speak loud.
No, it needs to be recorded. Mayor, it needs to be recorded.
Hello? All right, there you go. Okay, this is a Parker Mason from Barbara Kokowski, who's an icon in the Township of Preciponey, Troy Hills. I've been here since, uh, I'm not going to say the date because it gives me my age, but, and I think you've been around a lot longer than I have, but...
Yes.
Because you're, you know, but this is a Parker Mason from the Township of Preciponey, Troy Hills. I have to hug you, I'm Italian.
Oh, good.
Whereas Barbara earned a BA from Trelly Dickinson University and an MA from William Patterson University, where she served for many years as an adjunct professor, and whereas Barbara's honors include 2008 Outstanding Arts Advocate from the Arts Council of Morris Area, the 2009 Woman of the Year in Arts and Entertainment Awards from Garden State Women's Magazine, and 2010 Female Legend of Morris County from Morris County Chamber of Commerce. And whereas Barbara used her 30-plus years of skill and experience in theater to guide this unique group to its accolades through many venues through the years, such as the Playwright Theater in Madison, the Bigfoot Theater in Morristown, and since 2005, this current home at the Preciponey Playhouse in the Senior Center. And now, therefore, I, James L. Barberio, the Mayor of the Township of Preciponey, Troy Hills, do hereby present this Parker Mason on behalf of the residents of Preciponey, Troy Hills, as a token of respect and admiration for Barbara Kokowski, and I urge the residents of our community to follow her example of service and accomplishment dated this first day of November 2022. This is for you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Now, I will tell you this. I remember the one play I went to, because I told you I was a big Frank Sinatra fan.
Yes, yes.
And we, and we had that, uh, the show, and I loved it.
Yes.
I mean, I'll be back to my father playing the records of Sinatra, old time music, of course. But that being said, um, I really, you know, I know Mrs. DePiero's here, I know Mike DePiero, have known you for many years, and all the things that you've done for the community of Preciponey, Troy Hills, truly, truly, truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now, I don't know if you know this, but I was getting bagels one Christmas, uh, one Christmas Day, and I was so excited because your daughter was getting them, and I didn't know how to, I didn't know, because she was, you know, a famous actress, so I didn't know how to even present myself, who I was, so I didn't say nothing but hello. So, so hello, you were getting bagels on Christmas Day, so you know.
Born and raised.
Yeah, I know, it was, she went, yeah, she went to school Lake Hiawatha, I know, I...
Yeah.
See, I got my record straight there, so, but I don't know if you'd like to say anything?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll bring this down a little bit.
That's great.
Yep.
I'm an actress, I can yell.
Oh, yeah.
I really want to thank Preciponey, the mayor. I think they're so wonderful. I lived here for 50 wonderful years. Some of my biggest and lasting memories took place in Preciponey, and I'm so happy to get this, and it's my hometown, it'll always be. I want to thank Jane, Joe, Lauren, Barbara, my best friends who had the will to come out and cheer me on, and thank you, all of you, and all the people I know, and hug and kiss every time. I love you and I'll always love Preciponey.
You sound like a mayor.
And you can vote for me.
Uh-oh. I missed one. I don't know if any council members would like to say anything.
I want to thank you. I think we, you and I, attended every play you had there.
I think, yes, you have.
And it was a joy, every one of them. It was really, what you played for Preciponey was phenomenal.
You're a big fan, thank you.
And, and my grandson is a big film viewer.
Yes, yes. His grandson was one of the versatile kids in one of my plays, and he's about that big then.
Is that recall the title was Letting Go?
Letting Go, yes.
Was that it? Letting Go?
Letting Go.
The window was getting smaller and smaller?
No. Oh, goodness, that's a wonderful show, too. It was an original piece. Oh, that was so sweet. Thank you, guys, and people I don't know. Just as, just as an afternoon, I tried to get a plaque put on the wall, uh, Mayor,
I tried to get a plaque put on the wall outside the theater for Jane, but she was not comfortable doing that, so we didn't do it.
This was my mom's thing.
I had it all laid out for you, but, uh, we didn't do it. If you change your mind, let me know.
I'm very thankful for Preciponey, too. I'm very lucky to have such a daughter who is so caring and supportive of everything I do here. She was a good kid.
Excellent.
What's coming up?
Thank you so much. I'm really glad.
We won't say break the line.
Yes, that's good luck and dearness.
That's right.
Thank you. Oh, thank you so much. Thank you, my buddy.
My buddy.
I brought here some older...
Yes, supportive, really, at the theater, it was wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. You guys, so nice.
Thank you so much.
Hi, Jamie.
What's your name?
I'm from Tendrero.
Oh, my sweet.
Most sweet. I just want to tell you, the Women's Club of Preciponey has been wanting you for years, and you've become such a friend.
Yeah.
Yet come to your mic.
There you go, ma'am.
You know, the Women's Club is there always.
Yes, I'm from the Women's Club of Preciponey, Troy Hills, and Barbara has been such a wonderful friend to us.
Yes.
And supporting us in so many ways, and we love her. She's like the perfect lady. Oh. And I do love her.
It's always been so helpful and supportive and cheering us on. It's been really wonderful. Women's Club, ladies, to make it official. Women's Club, ladies, to make it official.
Pardon me?
No.
It's Mr. D.
I don't know why she's in there.
She's not in.
She's not in.
She's in everything else. I know. I figured she was in.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, my buddy.
She's not in.
Yes, I did.
She's in everything else. I know. I figured she was in.
Thank you. Thank you. I know it's tough to look at that. Yes. Oh, my. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Thanks for all this. They don't let me drive at night. Oh, you're kidding me. Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. Bye-bye now.
Okay, moving on with the meetings. Any reports with the Township Council? Township Attorney?
Uh, no report, Council President.
Thank you. Affairs Administrator?
Nothing as of today.
Township Clerk?
No report at this time.
Township Officers and Committees? Nothing at this time. Okay, bids taken, 10/26/22, Meter Replacement Program Phase 1. Is it, um, are those meters, homes meters that are being replaced?
That, I don't know.
Bids taken. It says Meter Replacement Program, Phase 1.
That's what it must be.
But it doesn't say whether it's commercial or residential or both.
I'll find out. Um, I do have something I would like to bring up if I can, I'm sorry, Council President.
Okay.
Um, as you know, I received, um, I had actually a meeting with a resident from Mount Tabor Friday, Councilman Neglia and I, with regards to the library, so you're gonna, there'll be some discussion about the library in Mount Tabor tonight, as well as, um, and I brought the chief over today about all the burglies that are going around in the township, so that's going to be addressed as well. Um, I spoke to the chief earlier this morning, and, um, we'd like to address it, we'd like to address the staffing issues that we have, but I, the residents are concerned, I heard their concerns, and, um, we need to address them, and, uh, we will. So, I just wanted to make you aware, that's why you see.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the meeting, I attended when we met with the Library Board, no discussion ever took place at that meeting regarding the Mount Tabor Library.
Exactly.
None at all. So I was rather surprised to see when we received some letters from Mount Tabor residents, uh, we had never discussed it.
Yeah, I was at the same...
We were talking about the Lake Hiawatha Library only.
Yes, I was at the same meeting, and absolutely no discussion took place about that. As Council President said, it was strictly about the Lake Hiawatha Library. That came as a surprise to all of us.
Okay, Mayor?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. And, uh, we get to the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting.
Make a motion.
Second, Grignani.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call. Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
The floor is open to the public on any topic. You can just come up, man. You guys can, whoever would like to speak can just come up to the mic, and are we, it's a five-minute time period.
One at a time, state your name and address. Yes.
We have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Good evening. Pull up my notes here. My name is Debbie Nemirovic, and I live here in Preciponey at 220 Littleton Road. I have been a lifelong Republican and a volunteer for various causes. During the mayor's previous election, I asked all of my friends in town to vote for him against the previous mayor. I am horrified to see that a Republican mayor openly supported liberal policies like project labor agreements that will now drive up my taxes to pay for the favors of special interest groups. I was offended that at the previous council meeting, the mayor referred to those who wrote online about this ordinance as a keyboard warriors. Well, I can say that I attempted to come to the previous meeting to speak my mind, but felt a little scared, hmm, very scared, with the union protesters that were there. No, good reason, I walk with a cane, so I'm not going to get involved in any of that. Mayor Barberio, if you want to keep the faith of Republicans like me, which we shook hands a couple weeks ago, I'm hoping you and the council consider overturning this ordinance. At this time, I want to thank you for your time, and I appreciate you allowing me to speak first, and I wish everybody a nice evening.
I'll respond at the end of the hearing, Council President.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
I hope you bear with me for a minute because I am here to speak about the recent incidents that have occurred in town, so if you don't mind if I could read what I prepared, because I'd like my voice to be heard. My name is Zolene Whitney Morley, I reside at 58 Summit Road. I have lived in Preciponey since 1963. I'm a long-term resident, I'm a taxpayer as well as a voter. I'm here tonight because of the recent crimes that occurred in the township over the past year that have escalated out of control. Number one, on my street alone on Summit Road, in one week's time, the following has occurred. On October 12th, on the corner of Summit and Halsey Road, a man dressed in a bush costume was peeping into people's homes. On October 14th, a car was stolen out of a neighbor's driveway. On October 25th, two catalytic converters were stolen from my neighbor's van for the second time in less than six months. This is just a sampling of the 22 incidents that have occurred between January 2022 and October 25th of '22 on my road and approximately six roads adjacent to mine. This incident report was provided by the Preciponey Police Department. It does not include the incidents elsewhere in Preciponey or the most recent thefts on Flemington Road or Beechwood Road. When the police are called, we're always told the same thing, which is the truth. Our hands are tied due to current laws, if they're caught, they're released within 72 hours, it only takes about three minutes to get a catalytic converter off a vehicle, and there simply aren't enough police officers on staff, especially in the evening hours. One week ago, on October 26th, I personally went to the mayor's office and requested a meeting about my concerns, as well as provide all of my contact information. I was told by that office that I would hear back from the mayor or his office later that day. One week later, as I stand here today, I have not heard from you. Again, I'm a long-term resident, a taxpayer and a voter, very disappointed. While at the mayor's office, I was told by his staff that the reason there aren't enough police officers is because the previous administration simply did not rehire them when they left. While the current administration has been in place for almost a year, where are our new police officers?
We are in the process.
Okay, I understand that, but I'd like to continue.
Okay, I'll let you.
All right, my following questions are as follows. Why are there not more officers on in the evening than during the day? This has come straight from your police officer's mouth, when they've come to our street when we've had all these incidents. Many of the incidents occur between 2:00 a.m. and 4:00 a.m. It should not be up to residents to be up in the middle of the night listening for noises when we have and pay taxes for a police force. Why can't day officers be placed on in the evenings so we can have more patrols, at the very least temporarily, until we can get this figured out? Where are the unmarked police cars? I don't see them. I rarely see a police officer in my, on my street or my neighborhood. Quite honestly, I see them sitting places, and that's the truth. Lake Preciponey Park, the fire department, or in the back of the parking lot, and I'm not the only person that's seen that. That's concerning. A solution might be to utilize unmarked police cars and have them actively patrol neighborhoods that have been getting hit hard. My point being that something needs to be done immediately to curtail the escalated amount of criminal activity in our neighborhoods and our town. Myself personally, I don't feel safe in my home anymore. I don't feel safe in Preciponey. It was a wonderful place to grow up in, a wonderful place to raise my daughter. Again, I've been here since 1963. I no longer feel safe here, neither do many of my neighbors. I do not expect the crime, the crime to go completely away, however, the powers that be, which are all of you, can do better and make Preciponey a better place to live again. As a long-term resident, a taxpayer and a voter, I'm asking you, the town council, the mayor's office, Mayor Barberio, the administration and the chief of police, to put your heads together. It seems like a lot of people are passing the buck, um, and come up with a solution. Thank you for your time. Also, I have, um, a spreadsheet of the 22 incidents that occurred. If, if you want them, I can give them to someone to pass out to you.
Give it to the Township Clerk.
And they came from the police department, so that's up through October 25th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Um...
Please.
No, no, I just need mine. Beautiful, thank you, man. You got it. You're very welcome.
My name is Raymond Gallup. I live in Lake Hiawatha, 45 Yeracoy Avenue. I'm here about the PLA, the Project Labor Agreement. The only person that was against it was Justin Musella, and I commend him for that. Um, I, in 1985, I worked at a communications company in Piscataway, and they had a labor union there. I was a white-collar worker there in accounts receivable. I lasted six months. It was the Teamsters Union, so I'm against unions, basically, and I'm also a lifelong Republican, and I've been living here in town since 1982. Uh, I hope you repeal this terrible agreement, because Democrats only benefit from it, it's costly. Being in bed with labor unions is not a good thing, only Democrats do that. Joe Biden and the Democrats are in this, and thank you for letting me speak on this matter.
I'm Dawn Catanzaro, 86 Morris Avenue, Mount Tabor. Um, I'm here on behalf of Mount Tabor, their concern about the recent recommendation by Melissa Cosma of closing the Mount Tabor Branch Library. Back in September, there was about 20 Mount Tabor residents that attended the Library Board meeting, and many of them spoke, asking when the library would reopen, because it had been closed during the pandemic and still hadn't been reopened. The Library Board seemed to listen very closely to us, they took notes, they said thank you for your comments, and so we, we left that meeting feeling very good. In the October meeting, four of us went to the meeting, there was only a total of five people in the audience, complete, you know, the entire audience, but four of us were from Mount Tabor, and I stood up at the mic and I asked, um, Melissa Cosma, have you had a chance to discuss and figure out if and when Mount Tabor Library is going to reopen? And she told me that it would be on the agenda and she would talk about it then. Well, what ended up happening was no one else stood up to talk, because we figured she would answer our questions during her report. And when she read her report, she read a lot of facts and figures, and she was kind enough to send us the report, so we have copies of that, but at the end of it, she said, "My recommendation to the Library Board is to close the Mount Tabor Library Branch Library." And we were totally blindsided by this. We were not given an opportunity to ask questions or discuss it, and as some of you Board members had said earlier, that at the September meeting or the August meeting, there was no discussion of closing it. So what we did in Tabor was we got together on Saturday night, now this happened on a Monday. Friday, I met with the mayor and Councilman Neglia, and we sat down in, in the mayor's office, and I told them what had happened. And then on Saturday, we had a meeting in town, in one of our town buildings, we had 80 people from Tabor show up, and they listened very closely, we had a number of presenters that gave different information, um, and we got ideas and suggestions from the people of Tabor about why they felt the library should remain open. Maybe could I just ask if people behind me that are here in support of reopening the library from Mount Tabor could stand? Is that okay with you?
Sure.
If you would just stand.
That's fine.
Okay, and at this point, we have an email chain where I'm giving information, updating information, we have our little team of library, the little core group of five of us that started all this, but right now we have 95 people on that email chain, and this has only happened in a week and a half. We are very concerned about this library, the good that a community walkable library does, and this library in its existing form, this little stone structure that's a historic building, has been a library in that building since 1901, and it has continued to serve not only the Mount Tabor residents, other Preciponey residents as well, through its storytimes, its book clubs, lots of activities, and most of those things had been cut prior to the pandemic. And Melissa's, her report to us cited information and data from 2015 to 2019, and during that time period, they drastically cut the hours at our branch, and they were not even the same hours every day, it was very sporadic. People would come to the library, it was locked, nobody was in there, so then they would go home. So when she was quoting to us numbers of library cards, numbers of people who visited the library, that was greatly affected by it not having the full hours that are there. So we have lots more to share with you, and we will at the next town council meeting, but I wanted to just kind of represent all of us, rather than taking up the entire night with everybody talking, there may be some people that want to share something with you, but we definitely are concerned about this and feel as though a library is an invaluable asset to a community, and to close it would be just terrible. So, thank you.
I've been a resident of Preciponey, 44 Lawrence Road. I've been a resident of Preciponey over 20 years now. I'm here with my wife, Sandra, and I just want to echo with what one of our previous residents so eloquently stated, so I want to tell you my experience, our experience. It was a week ago today, uh, the wee hours of Tuesday morning, um, the catalytic converter theft ring liberated the part from my son's car. We're on liability insurance on it, right, but that, we're off $3,000 that we can't afford to fix the car, but that wasn't the most insulting thing, upsetting thing. Our neighbor across the street has very good, um, security video footage, which I supplied to the police. Um, a couple, a couple days after we brought the car home... There was only a total of five people in the audience, complete, you know, the entire audience. But four of us were from Mount Tabor. And I stood up at the mic and I asked Melissa Cosma, "Have you had a chance to discuss and figure out if and when Mount Tabor Library is going to reopen?" And she told me that it would be on the agenda and she would talk about it then. Well, what ended up happening was no one else stood up to talk because we figured she would answer our questions during her report. And when she read her report, she read a lot of facts and figures, and she was kind enough to send us the report, so we have copies of that. But at the end of it, she said, "My recommendation to the library board is to close the Mount Tabor Library Branch Library." And we were totally blindsided by this. We were not given an opportunity to ask questions or discuss it. And as some of you board members had said earlier, that at the September meeting or the August meeting, there was no discussion of closing it. So what we did in Tabor was we got together on Saturday night. Now, this happened on a Monday. Friday, I met with the mayor and Councilman Naglia, and we sat down in the mayor's office, and I told them what had happened. And then on Saturday, we had a meeting in town, in one of our town buildings. We had 80 people from Tabor show up, and they listened very closely. We had a number of presenters that gave different information. And we got ideas and suggestions from the people of Tabor about why they felt the library should remain open. Maybe could I just ask if people behind me that are here in support of reopening the library from Mount Tabor could stand? Is that okay with you?
Sure.
If you would just stand.
That's fine.
Okay, and at this point, we have an email chain where I'm giving information, updating information. We have our little team of library, our little core group of five of us that started all this. But right now, we have 95 people on that email chain, and this has only happened in a week and a half. We are very concerned about this library, the good that a community walkable library does. And this library, in its existing form, this little stone structure that's a historic building, has been a library in that building since 1901. And it has continued to serve not only the Mount Tabor residents, other Percipony residents as well, through its storytimes, its book clubs, lots of activities. And most of those things had been cut prior to the pandemic. And Melissa's, her report to us cited information and data from 2015 to 2019. And during that time period, they drastically cut the hours at our branch. And they were not even the same hours every day. It was very sporadic. People would come to the library. It was locked. Nobody was in there. So then they would go home. So when she was quoting to us numbers of library cards, numbers of people who visited the library, that was greatly affected by it not having the full hours that are there. So we have lots more to share with you, and we will at the next town council meeting. But I wanted to just kind of represent all of us rather than taking up the entire night with everybody talking. There may be some people that want to share something with you, but we definitely are concerned about this and feel as though a library is an invaluable asset to a community, and to close it would be just terrible. So, thank you.
I've been a resident of Percipony, 40 Lawrence Road. I've been a resident of Percipony over 20 years now. I'm here with my wife, Sandra. And I just want to echo with what one of our previous residents so eloquently stated. So I want to tell you my experience, our experience. It was a week ago today, wee hours of Tuesday morning, the catalytic converter theft ring liberated the part from my son's car. We're on liability insurance on it, right? But we're off $3,000 that we can't afford to fix the car. But that wasn't the most insulting thing, upsetting thing. Our neighbor across the street has very good security video footage, which I supplied to the police. Couple, a couple days after we brought the car home, we had them, we had the theft on footage, but you can't see them clearly, but we had the theft on footage. Two days after we brought the car home from the mechanic, unfixed, they stopped in front of the car again to case, to case the cars in the driveway, particularly the Honda Pilot, they're targeting those, okay? Another night, again, all one week, this is all one week, the thieves stopped in front of my house again, wee hours of morning, 2:00 to 4:00 AM, got out of the car, snuck in the dark, and investigated the cars right across the street. Thankfully, my neighbor has this all caught on video, okay? This is all one week. Again, in the same week, my neighbor's on Marcela Road heard kids, not kids, where the guy's talking in the car, "Get in, get in." And they drove up the road, wee hours of morning, and I'm not sure if it's the same theft ring or not, but they were pulled over by the police. But as far as we know, no arrests have been made. And the patrolman I talked to, we sent the videos. Apparently, there's an investigation being, you know, being conducted, but they need evidence, okay? So naturally, we're all very upset. We're not getting sleep. We have to sleep with the windows open to hear any noise, but you got a really bad theft problem. This theft ring is very brazen. It keep coming back, okay? So, and that's just a week on my street, and it's happening all over, okay? So what I'd like to ask, which you're already being considered, considering, is to, you know, I was told by a patrolman that they're understaffed, especially the night shift. Also, one thing is, what you're already considering, is please increase the resources. And the second, secondly, is increase the night patrols, especially in our area, in the Lake Percipony area, right? It's very upsetting. It's upsetting my family, my kids, okay, and our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
I won't take too much of your time. It's just corroborating to the fact that Lillian and Sarah--
Name and address, please.
Sorry. Vinicius Saraswath, 61 Summit Road, Percipony. Same issues with burglaries and things that are happening here. Just want to say that if possible, some innovative solution can be done for our street. Our street has been hit seven times. It's 100% more than the second street that has been hit. That means the last one is, they had three burglaries or three, I'm not saying that they are of less value of anything, but something is definitely happening on our street, and that has been overlooked. Maybe because the street has two entrances, and the other entrance is probably goes to the lake and goes straight to the highway, or something else is happening. So if possible, if there can be some innovative solution, technical, technological solution like putting up a mobile camera on one end of the street or other end of the street where people access it, that will be helpful because we are not feeling safe at all here. Living in Lake Percipony for 20-plus years, being water, being property, property taxes all going up, I don't think this could be an issue of funding, I would say. But if, and we are, again, the gentleman provided the footage. I had a Ring camera. I have it on all the time. I'm also, like, in the middle of the night, checking the footage, making sure that if neighbors can be alerted on time. That gentleman over there, his car was burglazed two times within one month, and like thousands of dollars of, I mean, insurance might drop him at all. So those kind of things are very serious. If you want people to, like, mayor is giving accolades for people who have been here contributing for town to be such a fabulous town, and if this has to go on, then in that case, we have to work towards security and the well-being for the people who are living here going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm in the, I live at 916. So we wanted to reopen the library because I think the children will love to do storytime in the beginning and do a project at the end. So the library has to be opened. Thank you.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
I'm just here to share my concern. Last week, as a previous resident from Summit Road said, two cars from my own two cars, early wee hours on the same day, catalytic converter were gone. Things can be replaced with money, but the sense of fear, and that's why I'm here, to request the board to take aggressive, necessary action. Because feeling safe, that is what we all want, whether you are here or whether you are on another part of the country. And like major catastrophe 20 years ago taught us how to feel safe. So may I only request the board to take aggressive actions and make a priority to make every citizen of this township feel safer. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ken. My name is Ken Dewey, 710 Fenwick Road. And I'm here to voice my opposition to the Project Labor Agreement ordinance. I fail to see how this ordinance will save the Percipony taxpayers a dime. The ordinance will not provide a fair and competitive bidding process. If a project is put out to bid with an estimated value of $5 million, how can it become a competitive bid if the contractors that have an agreement with the union know that this is a starting point? Who will be responsible for the taxpayers' dollars when the union assigns the low bidder? You say this ordinance will prevent lowballing. How will it prevent gouging? It is said that many, I'm sorry, it is said that by employing union labor, the workers will be more skilled. I know this is not true. I am a local contractor. I do bid public work and have my men attending the same classes as the union workers. It is his town's responsibility to ensure the contractors are registered with the state's internship program. My men grew through the same four years of schooling and on-job training. They're equally capable. They receive the same pay scale as the unionized workers. In fact, they see more money in their checks because there are no deductions for dues or other obligations. You say the ordinance will prevent delays from labor conflicts. By approving this, haven't you just let the wolves over on the henhouse? If labor conflicts are an issue, why not introduce an ordinance to allow the union workers space to voice their disagreement and the non-union workers to continue working? The town has an obligation to the taxpayers to be good stewards of their money.
My name is Ken Kaplan, 1480 Route 46. And I also want to speak about these Project Labor Agreement ordinance. PLAs have been around for a while. They're nothing new. They came into play in the Big Dig up in Boston in 2001, which was a debacle. Cost overruns for days. In fact, George W. Bush prohibited, banned project labor agreements from all federal projects after that, and for the rest of that project that was that bad. Bids should go to the lowest responsible bidder, union or non-union. Now, I was really, I was really shocked when I found out that a Republican administration in this town introduced and passed this legislation. I mean, Republicans generally run on fiscal responsibility and responsibility to the taxpayers. And to me, this is a complete violation of that. Also, back around 2001, the courts threw out some PLA agreements for two high school building projects in Lynn and one in Boston Hyde Park. And when the new bids came in, they were $500,000 and $664,000 lower respectively for these projects. It's a big savings. In other places, there's also been cost overruns with these agreements. There was an arena in Cleveland, which was originally estimated at $118 million and came in 25% over estimates. The Ohio Legislature subsequently voted to prohibit union-only deals on state projects. Now, it really limits who's going to bid on these projects. Nationwide, 87.4% of the construction industry does not belong to a union. In New Jersey, it's not quite that percentage, but still, 73.10% of the construction industry in New Jersey is non-union. That means you're leaving, you're eliminating approximately three-quarters of the potential contractors, and you're leaving it to, to, you know, a quarter of the potential contractors to bid on these, on these projects. Now, you may say, "Well, the ordinance doesn't prohibit that. A non-union contractor can bid on the contract, but then he has to hire the union labor." Well, does he really want to put his reputation and on the line with people he doesn't know? Having to use union employees that he's never met before or dealt with before? Let me put it on a personal level. If you ever have heart surgery, and the hospital told you, "Heart surgeon, no, you can't use your regular team, the nurses and technicians who are familiar with you. No, you've got to use some random people that we assigned to you." I don't think you would be too confident about that. I don't think you'd be too happy about that. And as a resident of this town, a taxpayer of this town, I don't want that to happen. You have an opportunity to repeal this ordinance and restore fiscal responsibility and give everybody an equal opportunity to bid on these contracts. Thank you.
I'm Elaine Givalius. I live at 66 Bound Brook Road, and I've been a resident for 28 years. I, too, am very disappointed. I was at the last meeting about the PLA agreement at the high school, and it was quite an experience. The hundreds of union people were very intimidating and made you feel like you couldn't disagree with them. In my area of Lake Percipony, I know of a group of people from the Indian community who attended the first meeting. They were, they were so fearful that they felt like they were going to be beat up. Unfortunately, most of them will not be attending any more town hall meetings. This is not right. They really felt very fearful. They, all they wanted to do was express their opinions. In doing my own research, I believe the cons outweigh the pros. Increased costs will raise our taxes. PLAs are anti-competitive and inherently unfair to the non-union contractors and non-union employees. No one can guarantee 100% that their work is going to be perfect. I think this ordinance should be repealed, and I support Justin's vote of no. Thank you for your time.
My name is Hank Keller. I live at 10 Fenwick Place in Percipony. Most of you know me, and I know most of you. I'd like to address myself to the mayor, who spoke strongly for PLAs, as well as with the rest of you who supported it as strongly as you did. And I owe it to myself and to each of you to share some information. Three voting seasons ago, I voted for most of you, and I was very happy with that. And then, two voting seasons ago, I didn't vote for most of you. I voted for the other guys. And that was something that troubled me a great deal because I have, I have been a conservative person for most of my life. And then in the last voting season, I voted for you, most of you, again, okay? And I'm saying this to you because I think it's really important that you understand what's, what's really happening, okay? When I didn't vote for you, I was, I didn't vote for you because I was dissatisfied with the way you were spending our money, our taxpayer money, okay? But I, but I ultimately became more dissatisfied with the folks who replaced some of you, okay? And now, we're back again, and I have confidence in you people. I really, I like most of you people. And I, and I am telling you that I think that the vote, the vote to make PLAs law in Percipony is a terrible mistake because-- The reason that I feel this is because when, when, when the, when the county and the state, I think it was the county, suggested, they brought forth that, that PLAs would be a good thing to consider, that was one thing, but it did not have to be, it did not have to be adhered to. It could be considered. When you folks decided, under, under, I think, a great deal of pressure from the union representatives, that, that this would become the law of Percipony, I think you made a terrible mistake. And I think it, I think that you disappointed yourself, and will pay for that, and I don't want you to pay for that. But additionally, but additionally--
Can the lawyer finish, please?
Yes, please. Additionally, the fact of the matter is that it's also disrespectful to the intelligence of, of the voters that, that, that support you. And, and that's all I have to say on it. I'd like you to rethink that entire issue. I'd also like to bring up the fact that there were two break-ins within a block of my home, I found out just today. And I tried to supply some of my camera footage to Sergeant Conover, who took it and was wonderful with it. I don't know what would become of it, but I think that we really do have a real problem in Percipony. And, and I'm not the person to solve that for you, but I know that you do have the right people to, and I think we need to, I'd like to spend money doing that, not on PLAs and, and things that do not help our, our community. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
My name is Rich Corbett. I live at 105 Park Road in Percipony. Good evening, members of the town council. Good evening, mayor. And by the way, as I sit back there and I watch carefully how attentively you listen to the speakers up here, I thank you very much for that. Because I know that at least we're dear, we may disagree on issues, but I appreciate the respectfulness and the attentiveness to which you give all the speakers. I think it's very, very important. I was at the town council meeting on October 18th. I was in the minority, speaking against the ordinance requiring PLAs for projects over $5 million. Listening to the majority on October 18th, one might believe that hiring union workers precludes cost overruns, ensures timely completion of projects, and guarantees quality workmanship. My experience proves different. As a former union member, I was in Local 333, Amoeba 2, and a current employee in the public sector, my experience is that cost overruns and delays are so common in the public sector, they're expected. Furthermore, if a newly completed project fails, it's really the architect that should be held accountable, not the workers. And believe me, I support the rights of all workers to earn a fair and living wage. Moreover, they're entitled to fair labor practices and safe working conditions. And frankly, I admire their skills. However, PLAs are not right for Percipony. At this time, I appeal to the town-- At this time, I appeal to the town council, to the mayor, to protect the fiduciary interests of the town and its residents, keep this town fiscally solvent, and repeal ordinance 2022-24. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you.
I live at 187 Bell Road, Parsippany. Good evening, councilor and mayor. At the last council meeting, the mayor referred to my wife and I as keyboard warriors for writing a letter to the editor rather than speaking person. Well, we stand by what we've expressed in writing, and we are not afraid of speaking up for our principles and our beliefs. So here I am, person representing my wife and I, to say exactly what we wrote to the council, our fellow Republican committee members, and in the letter to the editor. We do not agree with the PLA ordinance that was passed by the majority of this council. We thought that by having an all-Republican council and mayor, we would have an administration that would support Republican values and principles, and this did not happen in this particular case. Republicans generally advocate for traditional values, a low degree of government interference, and large support of the private sector. And the party's fiscal conservatism includes support for lower taxes, free market capitalism, and deregulation. As important as it is to vote for Republicans as we are asked to do, we must make sure that they are the right Republicans. What is the point of voting someone into a position just because they are Republicans if they're going to present legislation and ordinances similar to the Democrat representatives? Earlier this year, President Joe Biden directed federal government agencies to use PLAs on projects, on federal projects. So what does that tell you about where the policy stands on the political spectrum? Parsippany is important to each one of us, and we must make sure that stays out of the swamps that Democrats like to swim in. Let's be clear, our mayor and councilor are people we have known for a very long time, even some residents have known them a lifetime. So we must help them stay on the right side of the party and the issues. We are not against unions. We are against government restricting the rights of free, loving Americans that believe in free market. Please don't continue to go in this direction by restricting these freedoms. As mentioned by a previous speaker, over 75% of construction workers are non-union. So this truly is a carve-out for this special union interest. And even the perception of political payback causes distrust and controversy, as you hear We are not judging your personal integrity and values. That is between you and your own conscience. But we are speaking up for our values and integrity as Parsippany taxpayers and members of the Republican Party, to the representatives that we voted for. This keyboard warrior will always stand up to try to keep Parsippany to be the best place to live for its suburban lifestyle and conservative leadership that has helped our community prosper. So I leave you with these questions. What was the purpose of the PLA ordinance? What problem is it meant to solve? By what metric will we measure any success or impact? And now that the PLA ordinance has passed, how long will it be before the council is pressured to lower the dollar minimum? Please keep the political controversies to a minimum and concentrate on fixing what the previous administration has broken. Continue to bring more businesses to our town that our families can enjoy and keep our conservative values protected. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
I'm here to speak about the PLA, and I'd like you to reconsider your past vote.
We need your name first.
Tom Williams, Longridge Road. And what the previous speaker said, why? I don't know why he made this change. We had a level playing field. The small business owner had a chance to compete with everybody else. Then I heard about, at the last meeting, about fair wages, fair pay, and all those things. Well, I have never been paid a fair rate all my life. I get paid what I got paid, what I earned, what I strived for, what I got. No law was set in place to pay me a wage. I earned it. And the open bidding process allowed us, as taxpayers, to pay the fair rate to anybody who's bidding out there. In New York City, a few years ago, they made an ordinance change by law where all bellmen and bellhops in a hotel and apartment buildings had to be unionized. It had to be, this was made into law. So it pushed all the non-union buildings into a very strange situation. Either they do this, or they get fined. I don't want us to be put in a position where we have to do something. Without any PLA, we have flexibility. The key in business as well as in government is flexibility. You've got to be able to move and maneuver properly. At the last meeting, as I was leaving, one neighbor said to me, "Tom, in the last year, a year ago from now, my costs have gone up $1,000 a month living in Parsippany. Gas, inflation, and all those things. Will this new ordinance cost me more money? Will it cost me more money, or will we be doing fewer projects?" Now, we do fewer projects. That means the city now goes down, so we're in a big circle. So I would like your consideration and think about your taxpayers, what the impact will be long-term, and also your flexibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
16 Olive Road, Parsippany, New Jersey, Danny DeSai. Most of you know me very well, from name, and I voted for all of you one or other way many times. I'm here with due respect to all of you guys. I'm not opposing union. I do respect union. But it goes case by case. This town does not require PLA for sure. Community is very upset. Indian community is upset. I'm representing many of them today, tonight. Many of them scared to come in here last meeting. That doesn't mean they agree with your decision. They voted for you guys. They're not going to vote in future because of this action you guys have taken. I am also a county committee member. You all know me. As a Republican, I voted for one of you, all of you guys. This, I was in both sides. I'm a business owner. I had used union worker and non-union worker for my jobs. Two construction jobs has been done. They're definitely higher in the prices. There is no doubt about it. I personally experienced myself. So there is no way there is comparison. Competition has been limited. It's not a good idea. Guess what? How are we going to pay for cost increase? It's a domino effect. When you increase the cost of any project, it's going to come to the residents of Parsippany, like me and rest of the folks sitting here. Now, let's think about it. How can we, you know, eliminate 75% people living in Parsippany who are contractors? Eliminate them. They are paying the tax here in this town and not given opportunity to do this project or whatever, or bidding. That's absolutely disgusting. Why are we in this direction? I don't understand, but we need to rethink this. Only this gentleman has opposed it, and I salute for you, I applaud for you. Justin, thank you. Well done. I had expressed my personal opinion to each of you personally. I did, before even this started. And I had given the explanation. I disagree with this and that. Other thing is, bringing hundreds of people, Indian folks from out of residence area, not a good idea. Why are we bringing those? Give the fair opportunity to bring local people to speak here. They're all scared because of hundreds of people here. That was absolutely wrong. Twice I was here, I couldn't speak because of them. That's absolutely wrong. So with due respect to you guys, please, turn over this thing. We need to, you know, do something about it. We all trust it. We all vote for you. We all put you in office. Please, disrespect to the residents of Parsippany. Thank you.
Bernie Clarkin, 31 Flintlock Road, 35-year resident, certified public accountant. I was here back in early August at the meeting to discuss a related but different topic with the council and the mayor. At that point, after reviewing the budget, I said that the town taxes were going up by 14.2%, and the mayor...
You might have hit the lottery tonight.
Should be good.
I apologize about that.
You know what I mean.
I'm gone.
All right.
14.2% is what I said. You disagreed with me. We went back and forth. Maybe I misunderstood. One of the councilmen suggested maybe your 3.3% really was for the overall tax increase. Lo and behold, about a month ago, I got my final 2022 tax bill, the one in green, and I compared it to my final 2021 tax bill, which was in purple and white. And sure enough, the local municipal tax went up by 14.2%, and the total tax increase was 4.9%. So I would ask you, mayor and councilpeople, do you now agree with my analysis?
No, I don't. And I'll wait till everything's done. Until you're done speaking.
Well, no, I wanted to focus on, well, I would also add that the 14.2% increase basically represents four years' worth of 3.5% increases jammed into one year. So if you tune it down a little bit in future years, you already got there this year. That's my point.
Okay. And I explained this to Mr. Clarkin several times, which I'm glad you came back up. I told you the tax levy increased 14.6%.
Mayor, we're going to wait until everybody finishes.
I stopped. I am quoting my tax bill.
All right, okay. I'll answer it after everybody speaks.
It is my tax bill.
I'll answer after everybody speaks.
4.9% in total, and the municipal part of that went up by 14.2%. That is my bill, not some levy. And I'm happy to share that bill with anybody that wants to see it. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? If not, I'll contain a motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Resella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Floor's closed.
Okay. Mayor, you can respond.
Yeah, I'm just going to respond to the last speaker, and you guys can respond, and I'll respond later on to the other stuff. With regard to the budget, and I've said this several times, I said it on July 21st. I start when we introduced the budget that night, and I also stated it in several other meetings, that there's a difference between the tax levy and the tax rate, that is, that the residents get taxed on. The tax levy increased 14.6%. And I stated that every single meeting. And why? Because the council was in disarray. I came back in, and I said this at the meeting, and I came in, when I left in 2017, we had a $23 million surplus, total surplus, through utilities, through water, you know, sewer, and our current fund. I came back, eight and a half, nine million in the hole. Okay? So I have residents up here tonight, you know, concerned about our police force, concerned about all these things. Okay, well, in that four-year period, there was really no rehires of police officers. Okay? Because, I don't know why, we had a policy when I was mayor for the first eight years, that when a police officer retired, that we hired right away. So we could replace that policeman officer at the same rate, because that salary was already in the budget. Well, when I got back, that salary wasn't in the budget. And we're talking 10, maybe even more, police officers. The person that chief said to me when I came back as the mayor, we really have to beef up the police department. And I agreed with him. But the process takes so long, because you have to do certain things, train, you have to do background checks, you've got to send them to the academy and all that kind of stuff. So yes, the tax levy was increased 14.6% so we could run the township. Now, what I also stated was that if we wanted to get it below the 14.6% per cent, we'd have to lay off approximately 130 township employees. That's just that. Close the community center down, all right? Close our library down. And not function. You would not function. A township would not be able to function. So when someone wants to say conservative, like tonight, and I'm going to get to those issues later on, and fiscally conservative, there's a difference. Fiscally responsive conservative, that's the difference. We can say we're all fiscally conservative but responsible. That's a big difference. When I came back, and I saw that we only had 81 deployable police officers, I got to tell you something, I was not happy. I wasn't happy with the former chief for letting it to get that low. When I was the mayor previously, my chief challenged me. We had to. We have to beef it up now. As you see what's going on in the township, and I'm going to address that right now, what's going on in the township is a lot of burglaries, but that's throughout the whole state. That's throughout Monville. That's throughout Bruton. That's throughout, you know, areas of Fairfield. And why is that? You have bond reform. So we arrest somebody, 15 minutes later, they're out. So we have to tackle that issue as well. Right now, we are in the process of putting another 10 police officers on, and we have no choice. We have to beef it back up. When I left in 2017, we had approximately 160 deployable police officers. Down to 81 now. That's unquote, that's unheard of. Okay, so now, what was I to do? Mr. Clarkin was like to lay off 130 individuals, can't run the town, can't plow the streets, can't police the township. Couldn't do that. And I wasn't going to do it. And I told everybody when I was running, it would be pain. There's no doubt about it. There's going to be pain, because you have to fix what was broken. Okay? One thing I will say, you got hit with COVID. Okay? So during the COVID process, we lost revenues. So when the township loses revenues, we got to make those revenues up. So what happened in 2021? And I'm only bringing this up because a lot of you haven't been here for all the meetings. You're here tonight to talk about the PLA pros and cons, and, you know, we're all going to have opinions on that. But, that being said, when I got back into office, the town had to function. I knew what had to transpire. The good thing for me, for the last four years, before I was, when I was the mayor, I got certified as a public manager. I ran two townships. I'm a business administrator. I know what needs to be done, and I knew it was going to be painful. In fact, at one point, I knew it was going to be so painful that I almost didn't run, because I said, "This is just going to be very difficult." But I also felt I was the right person to do it, because I'm willing to sit here. I've got broad shoulders. Anyone could yell at me all you want, and I get that, and I take it. I had no problem, because you're not going to always agree with me. I'm not always going to agree with you. And just like Mr. Corbett said before, he came up to the previous meeting, and I respected him. I respect Mr. Heller, because we can agree to disagree on certain issues. And I truly appreciate that. I had a real task here to handle, and I'm going to handle it, and I'm going to do it the way it feels the right way to put somebody back on the map, the way it needs to be put back on the map. Okay? So when, I could not lay off 130. I'm sorry. Not that, because you couldn't function the town. I couldn't close the community center down. Let me see your citizens go to the community center. We depend on the community center, on the nutrition plan and the meals and stuff like that. And also, I was thinking of just shutting down recreation and hope that the organizations that actually put their time in and volunteer could run that portion of it. Well, at the end of the day, I had to make a tough decision. So what we did was we decided to increase the appropriations for capital. Why? Because capital was neglected... Because capital was, was neglected over the last two years. What I mean by neglected is we couldn't pay roads, because they cut the capital projects so low, that there's no way that the engineer could do that. So we put two point seven million of cap, of appropriation expenses into capital, so we can do roads this year. That's what brought it up to fourteen point sixty percent, okay? We had no choice. So that's the tax levy. What that basically means is that the budget increased fourteen point sixty percent from this year to last year. Now, the tax rate is a little bit different. The tax rate for municipal portion between three point two percent to three point three percent. So if you're paying ten thousand dollars now, your taxes will increase three hundred dollars on the house, says that, three hundred and twelve thousand dollars, and I got that from the tax assessor. He's right about the fourteen point sixty percent in the tax levy, he's absolutely correct. But your tax rate is also done by the county, the county gives you their rate, you get the rate from open space, the rate from fire, rate and all that kind of stuff like that. So, that's my response to Mr. Clarkin, and, and I will respond later on to the PLA, I'm gonna let the council speak, because I can go on forever. But I'm gonna tell you now, with regards, I do wanna answer one question here today with Mr. Rover, who came up, and with the keyboard warriors statement I made. I'll make it again, and the reason why I'll make it again, because what I meant by keyboard warriors, it was certain individuals, that their comments were so generic, that you know they were talking to each other, because it was the same comment going forward, forward, and forward, and forward, and it all came from the ABC, which is the Associated Builders and Construction, who made some comments with regards to asking for a PLA. What they don't tell you, what the ABC does not tell you, okay, is that they, there's a supply chain for it, and there's a labor shortage, okay, and that they want to hire, be able to hire individuals with no experience, they want, hire undocumented with no experience whatsoever, okay? I, I read that in a magazine, it was a February twenty twenty-two study by the ABC itself, okay? This ordinance puts Precipiny residents to work. I'll get into that more later on, with regards to that, but I'm gonna tell you now, this was not an easy budget, the budgets coming forward aren't gonna be easy, but we have to fix what's broken. Now, the chief is here tonight, I brought him here tonight for a reason. I hear your concerns, I, I have it in my area, I mean, and I know they're, they're looking mostly for Hondas, I put my Honda in my driveway. Okay, I go out at night, I have a police vehicle, I go around, I was in Glacier Hills the other night, I was in Lake Precipiny the other night, and we're going to beef it up, and, and chief, I don't wanna put you in pressure on you, but you are going to beef it up, there's no doubt about it, okay? Not going forward, I will say this to you, Mr. Clarkin, you always come up and you're respectful, and I appreciate that, I truly do, and we can agree to disagree, and eventually you have to come to my office, and maybe you can convince me, I have no issue with that, with the others. So I'm gonna stop right now, and I'll probably continue later, so thank you.
I just wanna point out that our first item on the agenda that we're going to vote on tonight is going to help the police department hire new police officers. That's ordinance twenty twenty-two, colon, thirty-four.
Listen, if I can make a comment.
Mr. Karifi.
For those people that got up and were speaking about the different crimes in Summit Road and stuff like that, it's a fact that this is happening, I'm retired law enforcement, did over twenty-five years, I now train law enforcement in Morris County. It's a fact, this is happening all throughout the county, and it's happening in a lot of towns that have a lot of access to highways, because they're coming from the east, they're coming up here, hitting us and then going. The biggest problem, the biggest issue, now, we are short in police officers, and we are doing that, is what's called bail reform, okay? These criminals know that they can commit the crime, they do not go to jail, they get processed out, they're released within a couple hours, and they just go and they come back, it's saying, it's the repeat offenders, you're just doing it. They know now, they just, the Attorney General just changed the law back now, where you can, police can pursue for stolen vehicles. But these people, they're not stupid, they knew now, in New Jersey, they don't even let you pursue, for years, you weren't allowed to pursue a stolen car. So these, they're employing juveniles, because they know they're gonna get out, and then they pay these juveniles for these stolen cars and the parts. An example of this, there's two towns in Morris County where, not that long ago, a person was caught burglarizing a home, was released within two hours, an hour later, was caught burglarizing another home in the next town over. This is what's going on because of bail reform. These criminals know that they're not spending time in jail. If we didn't have this bail reform, these people would get locked up. It's frustrating for law enforcement, because we would lock these people up, and they just get right out. If they would keep them in jail, they wouldn't be out, be able to commit these crimes. The mayor brought it up about the training and everything. The average, the, a police officer takes twenty-two weeks to train someone, when we bring them to the academy, twenty-two weeks. So by the time they get hired, you have civil service, you have backgrounds, you have psychological, all these different things that a candidate must go through, by the time that's all done, and now they go to the academy, you're talking months, seven, eight months before we're able to hi- hire somebody. We had in place the policy where, once an officer retired, the police department was allowed to hire someone right away to replace that person. That salary was already in the budget. Matter of fact, that salary was higher, because it was an officer, excuse me, at top pay, and now you were hiring someone coming in at starting pay. So we were actually saving money. But for the last four years, we weren't hiring any officers, and we're down tremendously. But the real issue here is that bail reform, because our people are out there, and like the mayor said, and the chief's gonna tell you, we're gonna beef up the patrols at night, but these people, they don't care, because they know if they get caught, they're getting right back out again. That's the problem, we need to get rid of this bail reform, that's really what it is.
Thank you. Frank?
I would just like to speak about the Mount Tabor Library. That really came as a surprise to me, as well as everyone up here on the council. You know, the library is important to the children, and I will support anything we can come up with, and anything the mayor comes up with to keep that library open to some extent, or, you know, it, it just has to be open. So, you know, hopefully, we can work something out on that, and we could figure it out with the library staff, I know the mayor is in favor of it as well, is gonna do anything he can possible to get that library to stay open.
If I could just add, I don't know how you say no to that little girl.
Council president, I'd like to say something. Thank you. One of the main themes that I've heard tonight is practically the unanimous dissent against the project labor agreement, and I made an oath that, from day one, I would do everything in my power to fight to keep this town affordable, so that residents wouldn't have to flee, and I'm proud of my vote, and I wanna thank everybody, from the bottom of my heart, for coming here to speak tonight in opposition to it. I understand the last two meetings to have done what you did tonight would have been extraordinarily difficult, and you can take that from somebody who was there, and, and I do hope that my colleagues do take into serious consideration the, the effort to repeal this ordinance. I do not believe it serves the taxpayers, and I don't wanna wait for the impacts it will have on your future before it's too late. Thank you.
Okay. Don Kevin Zer, when she spoke about Mount Tabor, I was here when, I guess it was about twelve, thirteen, fourteen years ago, when the library board started cutting back on the hours on the Mount Tabor Library. I got involved then with the CMA to see what we could do to, to work this out, and we did negotiate with the library board to get them to put back the hours that they needed. What goes, closing the library on the weekend, that's when the kids are out of school and, and wanna go to the library, didn't make any sense to me, and we, this just sounds like deja vu, they're doing it again, so we have to go back and try to talk to them, I guess. Anybody else? Mayor?
Just on, on the procurement process, which is important to understand, because, you know, you can hear about the PLA is coming over cost run, but we put a bid out, we put a bid out at a certain price, okay? So if that bid comes over, we deny it, okay? The township will deny the bid, even on projects five million or more, if they don't come onto what we need it to be, so, you know, we can deny it, we can deny it again, and then a third time, you can negotiate with union or non-union. When you hear about competitive bidding with regards that it's not fair, I mean, all's I can cite is the United States Supreme Court, who said that it is fair, that all, non-union and union can bid, they stated that case at the Supreme Court, and that's why PLA still exists, because it is competitive. I've spoken, now, here's what I do wanna say, I know many union members that are Republican, I know many union members that are Democrat, I know many non-union members that are Democrats, I know many non-union that are Republican. So when you can't get yours to a point, whether they, when you can't get your issue out, what do you do? Use a political stance. It's a Democrat thing, it's a Republican thing, well, you know what, I don't look at it that way. I don't look at it as Republican or Democrat. I'm the mayor of the township of Precipiny Troy Hills, so, so, so say a Democrat comes up to me, has a good idea, I'm gonna shut them out? No, I'm not gonna, okay? And, and, and that's where this has gotten at, that it's, it's like, you heard Mr. Rover, who's a Precipiny Republican Committee member, which will address on our Precipiny Republican Committee meetings, with regards to, you know, Republicans don't do this, Republicans don't do that, well, says who? I don't understand that, and that becomes confusing for me, because I'm running a town of fifty-five thousand residents, I'm running a town of about a hundred and eighty thousand during the day with all the businesses, so what do I say to a business that's raised liberal? I can't work with you. No, doesn't work that way for me. I'm sorry, I, I will never be that way, that's not how I was raised, and I'm, I'm for, I'm for good government. Now, you heard, I'm sure that, that unions contributed to you, yeah, non-unions contributed to me too, but you know what I guarantee them? I guarantee them good government, that's all. I don't guarantee them anything else. But you need to figure out, why did those union members come out and droves that day? I don't know why, I asked them why, and they have a reason, and that's for them to express why they came out against one individual. That's a question you need to ask them, not me, not the rest of the council. They came out for a reason, I didn't like it, I truly didn't like how many, and I didn't like, I get the applauding, I got broad shoulders, I had the, the water view project while I was being called names, okay? But that's part of it, man, you get called names, that's politics. I didn't, I don't feel intimidated by anybody, okay, and I know some people are intimidated, and I, I apologize for that, I can't control, you know, what happens in a meeting, but to be totally honest with you, it's not just for Precipiny residents that can come here, any member of the public, throughout the whole entire county can come to our meetings and voice their concerns any way they want, and we have to hear them just as well, okay? With that being said, though, I don't like the fact that they try to make it a Republican and Democrat thing, that becomes very frustrating, because it shouldn't be that way, it should be about good government, and that's really what comes out. So if my colleague believes that's good government, I respect him for that. I believe maybe this way is good government, and I hope I get respected back the same way, and that's all I ask for, okay? You don't have to agree with me, or you can agree with me, I would appreciate that, but you don't have to. But everybody up here works, you know, corroborately, I can't even say the word, but the bottom line's this, I don't look at it that way, so when you're gonna come up here and say, I'm not a fiscally conservative, I can tell you many ways I am, I can tell you many ways I might not be, but we all have our own opinions. So with that being said, one thing I wanna end with, and I think this is important to know, that we're gonna work very hard on the burglaries in town, we have to. I, I don't want our residents to be upset, to be scared, that is, that's not something I want. I grew up in this town, I've heard one member that was no longer than me, I've been here since nineteen sixty-four, okay? I was the first class at Eastlake School, I don't wanna date that back, but that's a long time ago, and Sue, you know, in the back. But that being said, here's what I do wanna end with, I thank everybody for coming out today, and if you did feel intimidated, I apologize, but that's not what I want, you got to raise your concerns tonight, and that's part of the process, and I'm glad you did, and like I said, we can agree to disagree, but I will always have your respect for you respecting us, and like Mr. Corbin said tonight, I truly appreciate that, because it's not easy sometimes being up here, and, you know, you take shots, you get slugged up, but that's okay, I knew that from day one, I remember my first time as mayor, when I got slugged the first time, I'd, I wanted to go run into a cubby hole, but now I don't feel that way. I'm, I'm here, I'm, I'm gonna fix the town, I'm gonna do the best that I can, and I hope my colleagues in the future will help me out, so thank you very much.
Okay, everybody done up here? All right, we'll move forward. You wanna find a recess?
No.
Yeah.
You wanna continue?
We don't have a very big agenda. Okay, ordinance is for introduction. Frank?
Ordinance twenty twenty-two, thirty-four, an ordinance of the Township Council, the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter Four entitled Police Department of the Township Code to create a new section, Ford slash twenty-eight slash one, entitled Appointments to Department Qualifications. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and passed on the first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, held on November first, twenty twenty-two, and that said ordinance be further considered for a second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, at seven P M prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in said township, at which time, all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve above resolution by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi, roll call Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Ordinance passes, motion passes.
By the way, for your information, that regards appointments for entry-level police officers.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two, colon, twenty-seven, an ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter two ninety, parks, recreation areas, and public lands. Article one, motor vehicles fees, section two ninety dash four, Noel Country Club utility fees, and Chapter A four four five. Fees complications, section A four four five dash thirty-seven, Noel Country Club utilities of the Code of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills in the County of Morris, New Jersey.
Okay, we're going, council president, we're gonna be introducing this ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and read the rest, if you guys don't mind, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Be it resolved that the ordinance be introduced, read by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, held on November first, twenty twenty-two, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, at seven P M prevailing time or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in said township, at which time, all persons interested shall be given the opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with a notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion, second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi, roll call Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Payroll. Provo payroll and bills list, CFO Leonard Ho recommends authorization for payment, authorization payment of eleven-ten-twenty-two, regular payroll estimated at one million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and payment of bills from voucher list eleven-one-twenty-two through eleven-three-twenty-two, estimate totaling one million nine hundred and forty-six thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-nine cents. Motion to approve the authorization for payment above by myself. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Neglia, roll call Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes at this time, as discussed with council president, the executive session will be canceled, so we can go straight to a motion to...
I'll let you name a motion to adjourn.
Second. I'll second it.
Who did first? Who was first, Frank?
Frank, I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi, roll call Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
We're adjourned, everyone have a good night.